At this time, I'd like to call our meeting to order. I would like to let you know that Commissioner Marley will probably be here late. He is actually, with his role and his position in Hope County, he is attending part of a budget meeting there, and it's required for his job that he be there. But he said when that meeting was over that he would head this way. So that is the reason Commissioner Marley is not here this evening. At this time, we have with us tonight Pastor Michael Mathis with Mission Field Ministries to lead us in our invocation, and be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you will, all please rise.
Oh Lord, oh God, thank you for your presence in here this evening with us. We're always so very grateful, God, for your loving kindness and your mercy, God, that you continue to bestow upon all of humanity. Thank you, oh Lord. We give thanks to you for how, when we error in our ways, Lord, we repent of any sin, and we thank you for forgiveness. We thank you, God, for setting things right in our lives by faith. And God, we always give a special thank you for our mayor and our family, the entire council, everyone associated with making major decisions here in the great town of Hope Mills. Thank you for the citizens here. We always feel so very safe and thankful for our first responders, God, and we ask, God, that you would keep guarding angels at their back and watch over them, Lord, especially in these dangerous times that we live in now. And now, Lord, as the board, the council begins the meeting. We thank you for the wisdom of man, but we call on you, Almighty God, for your wisdom to make good decisions pertaining to the people. This we ask in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. At this time, I do have additional items that have been requested to be added to the agenda, and one to the consent agenda, and that is consideration of a non-statutory ordinance number NS 2022-01 declaring a temporary road closure for the Fourth of July parade, and this is required by DOT in order to close DOT streets. And then a new business item, a consideration of a non-statutory ordinance NS 2022-01 declaring a temporary road closure for the Fourth of July parade, and this is required by DOT in order to close DOT streets. Remove item, I'm removing it, I'm sorry. I'm removing it from consent, and I'm moving it to New Business. Thank you for the correction. So in order to move forward, do we have any other additions or deletions to our agenda?
If I may real quick, we have a closed session on the agenda. We may want to add personnel of another closed session.
Okay. Okay, so. Okay, thank you. All right, so now we have, we're removing one item from consent, which is item I, and we're moving that item to New Business, which will be the second thing on New Business, which would make it item B. And then we're adding to our closed session also a consideration of personnel. Are there any other additions or deletions to our agenda?
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the agenda with the stated changes.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. The next thing we have on our agenda is official comments, and I will start this evening with Commissioner Scorola.
I have no comments, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Protem?
The only comment I have is that the Southview Trades Academy that we've been working on for almost a year now is starting tonight. They have a pretty full class. This is the construction wood framing class, and they are going to start the middle school trades academy at Southview Middle School, and that will be through FTCC at Southview Middle School, and that will, the tabloid will come out on March 15th. So please look out for that tabloid along with other summer programs for children, because I know there's a lack of that in our community. And we're also supposed to have this, a meeting this week to try to talk about possible internships for high school students. And so that way, we'll be touching the entire community in its workforce development, economic development, and so I would just like to thank everybody for getting the word about that and excited about that, if you know people that could benefit from taking those classes. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Mitchell?
Just want to say good evening and thank everyone for coming out to the meeting tonight. Thank you.
Commissioner Legg?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. First of all, I would like to also thank everyone who come out tonight. A quick update on my brother, I get asked about it all the time. He's doing quite well. He's in like six hours of therapy a day. He's supposed to get out of the hospital around the 12th, and thank you for the prayers. They go a long way. There's no match for a good prayer. So thank you for that. If anybody needs me for anything, pick up the phone, give me a call. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And the only thing I have this evening, of course, welcome everyone that's here, but I just feel strongly that we ought to keep Ukraine in our prayers and in our thoughts. I am, every time I see something on the news and the president talking over there, I can't, I just, the patriotism and thinking about what if that was us, what if something like that was happening here, and I just hope we have the resolve to do the kinds of things they're doing, and I just hope that things change for them, but I do think it's important that we do remember them in prayer and also hope that something will change Putin's mind and they'll stop this. But anyway, that's all I have. We have presentation tonight, the first presentation is from the Cumberland County Community Development, and it's regarding planning for their 2022 annual action plan, and I'll turn it over to you right now.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dee Taylor, and I am the Director of Cumberland County in the Community Development Department. I also have with me Ms. Devon Newton in the back, who is our Community Services Manager, who you'll see from time to time to provide you updates on community development programs. And so that is my purpose, is just to provide you with a brief update on community development activities and to let you know about our annual action planning process. So on an annual basis, Cumberland County receives entitlement grants from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Again, this is annually on a non-competitive process. We use the funding to address various needs in our community, but we receive on an annual basis about an average of 1.2 million, and we use it for various, again, various projects where majority of the funding have to benefit those who are low to moderate income residents, and then the remaining funds can address slum and blighted areas as well as meet a urgent need. And so in order for us to continue to receive the funding, we have to prepare our annual action plan. That's where we also get feedback from each of the town municipalities, as well as residents in our community, to obtain their input on our annual action plan as far as the projects that we've identified to put funding towards. This year, our annual action plan will be distributed for public review, for 30-day public review, beginning the middle of March and end in April. And the Town of Hope Mills will be one of those sites that will place our annual action plan. Again, this document identifies potential projects that we'll fund and the priority needs that we will meet during that with the funding that we have available. So just to give you an idea of the type of fund, projects that we fund, one is our affordable housing development projects, and just to give you an example of projects that we funded in the past that's around in this area, such as Legion Manor, Legion Crossings, you have Southview Green Apartments or Southview Vias. So we have put funding towards that in partnership with the local developer. We also continue to have our owner occupied housing rehab program. This targets those homeowners who are in need of repairs to their home. We provide two types of, two forms of assistance. One is a deferred forgivable loan, where they don't have to pay back, provided they meet the eligibility requirements. That addresses substantial repairs. Then we have the grant program, which covers repairs of up to 10,000. Again, they don't pay neither one back, but it addresses just about any type of repairs that bring the housing up to standards. We do have a program that targets investor owners that will in turn rent out to low-income tenant. That is our rental rehab program, where we would provide, again, either a deferred forgivable loan or another type of loan depending on the target population. That's available for, again, investor owners who are looking for financial assistance to put towards acquisition or renovations, and in turn, they will rent it out to a low-income tenant. We have our first-time home buyers program, where we offer financial assistance to those who's looking to purchase a home. And we also partner with nonprofit agencies to provide human services. We partner with nonprofits or other public agencies to provide public facilities or infrastructure improvements and special economic development activities. So I just wanted to throw that out there, so you know we're still around, and we still, every, so now then, put out our request for proposal. We just have one that closed for our nonprofit and public facilities projects, but we still have the affordable development, affordable housing development, RFP, that's still out and will be due March 11th. And I believe that is it. And of course, if you want any updates on other county request for proposals, you just visit the Cumberland County website through their vendor self-service.
Okay, thank you.
And if anyone has any questions, they can always call our office at 910-323-6112.
Repeat that again.
And if you visit the county website, you can just click on Departments and Community Development, and you'll see a list of all our programs that we do offer.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming this evening. Next, we have proclamations. This first proclamation is the National School Breakfast Week, which starts today and runs through the 11th, whereas the School Breakfast Program has served our nation admirably since it was permanently established in 1975 and reaches some 15 million children across 91,000 schools and institutions in the United States each day, based on pre-pandemic data. Whereas the School Breakfast Program meets the nutritional needs of children, improves food security, advances child health and well-being by providing nutritionally balanced breakfast to schoolchildren each day. Whereas school-aged children who experience hunger are more likely to be absent from school, visit the school nurse, and experience more challenges than children with a nutritious diet, and skipping breakfast has consistently been linked with worse academic and health outcomes for children. Whereas eating breakfast improves children's overall diets, builds healthy lifelong eating habits, and enhances their ability to learn and perform academically. Whereas making breakfast a part of the school day, commonly known as breakfast after the bell, and offering breakfast to all students at no cost are desirable and effective ways to ensure more students realize the benefits of breakfast. Whereas the federal community eligibility provision offers eligible schools the ability to serve breakfast to all students at no cost, increasing food security and academic outcomes, while also allowing schools to eliminate the collection of paper applications, reduce administrative costs, streamline meal service operations, and increase reimbursement schools receive from federal child nutrition programs. Whereas 71,162, 705 breakfast meals were served in North Carolina in 2019, reaching 455,308 students, and whereas parents, caregivers, teachers, and school food personnel play an all-essential role to ensure the children of Hope Mills have the basic resources needed to grow, learn, and discover their own potential and live happily fulfilling lives. Whereas No Kid Hunger offers information, tools, resources, and grants to support schools in implementing and expanding school breakfast programs. And the School Nutrition Association offers free materials to help schools commemorate National School Breakfast Week, including artwork to decorate their meal-serving areas, toolkits and handouts, sample menu items, marketing materials, and suggested promotional activities, including games, activities, and contests. Whereas my administration is committed to helping expand access to and enhance current school breakfast programs to ensure that our children have the means to succeed. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Jackie Warner, Mayor of Hope Mills, do hereby proclaim March 7th through the 11th, 2022 as School Breakfast Week. I encourage all residents of Hope Mills to recognize and commemorate school administrators, food service directors, and cafeteria staff who operate school breakfast programs that ensure the health, safety, and success of our children. Thank you. The next one, the next proclamation is the Town Charter Day, whereas our town's founding fathers, in order to secure the blessings of liberty for themselves and their posterity, established an act to incorporate the Town of Hope Mills. Whereas it was ratified March 9th, 1891, and signed into law by the Secretary of State W.L. Saunders in Raleigh, March 31st, 1891. Whereas 2022 marks the 131st anniversary since the town's incorporation, and the Board of Commissioners wishes to observe this anniversary. Now therefore, I, Jackie Warner, Mayor of the Town of Hope Mills, do hereby proclaim March 9th, 2022 to be Town Charter Day. Next is proclamation for Multiple Sclerosis Awareness Week, whereas MS is a chronic and disabling disease of the central nervous system in which the progression, severity, and specific symptoms cannot be foreseen. Whereas every hour of every day, someone new is diagnosed with MS, a disease that can erode a person's abilities and hopes, halt a career, and unravel the fabric of families. Whereas the National Multiple Sclerosis Society reports in our state, more than 10,000 people are affected by this devastating disease, which generally strikes young adults aged 20 through 40, and the prime of their lives. Whereas research advances have brought us closer to finding the cure, developing a method of prevention for multiple sclerosis, and is an important task that all Americans and North Carolinians should support. Now therefore, I, Jackie Warner, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the Town of Hope Mills, do hereby proclaim March 13th through 19th, 2022 as Multiple Sclerosis Awareness Week in the Town of Hope Mills, and commend this observance to all of our citizens and surrounding municipalities as they join in this awareness week. And we do have the Lockaby family, who normally comes and accepts this proclamation, but Amanda Lockaby, their daughter, who was, my connection was she was actually not only a graduate of Southview High School, but she was a teacher when I was principal at Douglas Bird High School, and she was diagnosed with multiple sclerosis at that age, just when her career was getting started. And she is part of the research that is happening with multiple sclerosis. She's been a direct benefit of it, because she's been able to try different meds and stuff. So I want to commend the Lockaby family for all they do, but also, we do have quite a few in Hope Mills that are listed as multiple sclerosis victims. Next, we have public comments this evening, public comments, and a reminder that public comments, we listen, but we don't necessarily respond. Anything that needs to be recorded, our secretary gets it along, our clerk gets it along with our town manager. But this time, we have Cindy Hamilton, if you'll come to the microphone. You have three minutes, if you'll give your address, name and address, so it can be recorded with our virtual meeting also, and then I'll turn it over to you.
All right. My name is Cindy Hamilton. My address is 4216 Achilles Drive in Hope Mills. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, and staff. I'm here this evening to talk about some issues with animal control. It was brought to my attention that they've been enforcing something that's actually not in the ordinance, and that's that dogs must continuously bark for 15 minutes. When I ask about it, I was told it's just something we've always done. The animal control officer has seen these dogs bark twice, continuously, without any provocation. The first time was not provoked, it was continuous, loud, aggressive, and they were actually destroying the blinds in these people's house. This went on for two days. The second time, I was talking to Officer Howard in front of my house, they started again. Officer Howard wanted to know what triggered them. As he was walking toward the gate, he told the dogs to shut up. Once again, nothing triggered these dogs to bark. These same animals have damaged my fence. They habitually growl, bark, howl, and bawl in an extremely loud and aggressive manner. They even run the fence, growling and barking, when I have my dogs out or I am working in my yard. I can't open the door to my house. I can't sit on my sun porch or even make a noise in my house without the dogs starting to bark and growl. This is not only disturbing the peace, but it does annoy the comfort, repose, and health of myself. They have even gone so far as to stand in their doorway and watch the dogs without calling them in, as they have stated they do to Officer Howard. It is my opinion that they are using the dogs to harass me because of my calls to animal control and the police. I am asking once again that these irresponsible pet owners be cited, as they have violated the current ordinance. Chris Long from Cumberland County Animal Control came to my house. I wasn't expecting her, so I only showed her the two videos of the people standing in the doorway. So when she did her report, she put in there that she thought it was a people person, without actually witnessing the animals, which it does state in the animal control ordinance, that it must be witnessed. I believe that the videos that I sent show that that is not the problem. The main issue with everyone I've talked to is, if we impound the dogs, the shelters will be full, or I'm concerned what will happen to the dogs if they're impounded, or if we impound them, they just get another dog. These statements make me wonder if that is the real reason for enforcing, for not enforcing the ordinance. I don't believe that rushing an amendment stating that dogs must bark for 15 continuous minutes is going to be of any benefit to the citizens of Hope Mills. It's even, they've even admitted that there is not much chance of an officer witnessing a violation. My question is, why would it be part of the ordinance if it can never be enforced? As I stated in one of my emails, these nuisance dogs affect the citizens, veterans, elderly, and retired people who are only trying to enjoy their homes without these dogs disturbing the peace and annoying the comfort, repose, and health of the citizens. I'm respectfully asking that any amended ordinance be given consideration so as to benefit the citizens of Hope Mills. A few of the things that I think might work is requiring mandatory training for both the owner and animal, and/or increasing the fines that they have to pay for violations. Also, permit the citizens to use videos to verify that the animals are nuisance animals, since it's almost impossible for an officer to witness the violation. I have one more sentence.
Okay.
I really believe it's time that the ordinance are enforced as written, and that we are able to take our community back from the irresponsible, inconsiderate pet owners and nuisance dogs. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the statement. Next, we have our consent agenda with removing of item I, moving it to New Business. Do we have a motion to approve our consent agenda that's before you?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. The next item on our agenda is No Old Business, so we'll go to New Business, and it's consideration to authorize the town manager to negotiate and execute contracts related to the bathrooms at Thomas Oak Campbell Chapel, adopt related budget amendment number 23 in the amount of $46,775. And at this time, I'll turn it over to Lamarka, okay, Lamarka Morrison, our Parks and Rec Director. And this is behind tab 15, if you have any questions that you may want to ask him.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. I tried my best to stuff a lot of history in the actual agenda item, but just a few things I want to bring to you all's attention about what happened up until now. If you all would recall, at the last retreat about this time last year, the Commissioners directed staff to explore the possibility of doing a design bill contract for the restrooms. And at that time, that was back in March, we contacted a local engineer who teamed up with a contractor for a budgetary price, and we had a schematic design of the building, script footage, and site work, et cetera. And we got a cost for the design and construction of $138,000 from Jinkers Engineering and Commercial Builders. With that, we put the budget, we requested the $138,000 in the budget for the fiscal year, and it was awarded in July. And so not too long after that, the design team started on the drawings, completed the drawings around September, and at that time, the contractor, which was part of the design bill portion, backed out the project stating that he had, you know, bigger projects and more work. And so we tried with two other contractors. Rubicon was one, and I forget the other one. But at that time, we had three contractors that backed out of doing the work. And so at that point, we're in November, and so we opted to open up the bids, informal bids to everybody. And it wasn't until January that we got two bids, actually February, and the low bid was 176,900, and the second bid we got was 185,000. And so, you know, no real explanation, except for the fact that the cost of materials and construction has gone up. I mean, I don't think there's anything that staff could have done, or the engineer, engineer could have done, to reduce the cost. It's just the cost of doing business, you know, in this economy. So needless to say, we're about 40, 45,000 or so more than what we budgeted for, and so here we are.
Questions? If I have any questions in reference to this.
What, I'm sorry. What'd you say, the total?
The total, the low, the low bid was 176,900.
Seemed like when they get you down, they step on you, don't they?
Say it again.
Seems like when they get you down, they step on you.
Well, and then, and then also with that, and also in the agenda item, there's a, there's a request for contingency for this project, which also would, would pay for structural engineering. We had to get a structural engineer on the project for the canopy that's required, and in lieu of stopping the project, you know, I asked the architect to go ahead and do the work, and now he wants to get paid for it. And so the, the additional $3,000 would actually come out of the contingency fund, and then the contingency fund would, would pay for anything else that might come up during the course of construction. However, if, with a project this small, I don't anticipate having to use the contingency, and we will gladly return that back to the budget if we don't use it.
Madam Mayor.
How much, I can never ask one question. How much is the contingency fund?
It was, I did 3% because it's a, it's a small project, so the contingency is, I did the math, it is $5,307.
And do you have a question? Go ahead, I'll let you ask, because I've got another one, but I'll wait till you ask yours.
Is this a turnkey project?
It is.
All right, that's the key, that when we vote and approve, this is birth to death.
Right. Had the, had the conversation with the contractor and the engineer, the architect today, and so, of course, the general contractor got subcontractors, and that's where his numbers are coming from. So you got a general contract, and of course, he has subs, the electrical plumbing, but it is a turnkey project. Once he's in, once he's in, and I want to make this point clear, because I know the question was asked, well, how long is it going to take? It's a 90, it's a 90-day construction, but, but here's what I talked to the architect and the contractor about today. The key is, you know, if you all accept the contract, getting them on the contract and ordering the materials, because the turnaround time is what's killing us. And so the key is to go ahead and get those things ordered now, so the clock starts.
Right. Here's a question, one more question. Once we give you the go-ahead, and based on your input, your expertise, we should go with this project now, that's what you're saying, right? Because the way I see it, the price of gas and everything going up, this project is going to keep escalating and going up too. We either move now and pay what we're getting at right now, or we pay more later.
Possibly. It's, it's a volatile situation. Could be more, or, you know, anyway. There's no, I don't, I don't foresee it anytime soon, and the economists are saying things aren't going down anytime soon.
That's right, I agree.
But by saying this is a turnkey, we're not going to be faced with
We either move now, and pay what we're getting up right now, or we pay more later.
Possibly. And it's a volatile situation. Could be more, or, you know, anyway. There's no, I don't foresee it anytime soon, and the economists are saying things aren't going down anytime soon.
That's right. I agree.
But by saying this is a turnkey, we're not going to be faced with coming back and wanting more money? In other words, can we stipulate that in this contract?
That's why I threw a contingency in there, threw a contingency in there, and had these talks with the contractor, that once we do this, there's no coming back for more money.
Okay. Now, what about, I know that, I hate to say this, because it's a different project. But what about, are we sure that the site is okay for stormwater, for plumbing, for sewer? Because I know that, you know, one of the other projects, we found out after the fact that those things weren't, had to be redone.
We kind of.
So he can handle the stormwater, whatever it is, and the plumbing and the...
Yes. The project is small, and in fact, we've been talking about ways to, you know, reduce the need for stormwater measures, because we're going to lower, lower the grade of the, of the finished floor elevation, which in turn won't cause a problem with drainage in the center there. Because if you, I don't have a graphic with me, but that courtyard is kind of going to be like a bowl. But we've, we've got ways to address that now. And having done a survey, we've identified all the utilities. So we know all the utilities are...
There's water, sewer there?
Yes.
Okay.
And we know that we're not going to find anything, because we did do a survey. That's, the survey we did was actually part of Heritage Park, which actually combines all those plaques. It combines the existing Heritage Park and the two parcels, the old parish house and the church, into one. So that whole site is known as Heritage Park, including the church and the old heritage, and the old parish house.
And the plans are already there for stormwater?
Yes.
So, I mean, that was my thought, is just having had the discussion in our last meeting about the splash plan.
Right.
That I just wanted to make sure, because I was concerned if there was something else they were going to find, that I don't believe we can come back to the well on this project. I think this is one of those that's going to have to go with the amount that we have.
Right. And the good thing about this project is, we actually got a survey done of the site, you know, to let us know what things were. That kind of wasn't the case with splash. We had a survey, but we hadn't, we didn't, hadn't identified the utilities, you know, underground utilities with the sewer, so.
Any other questions? Okay, Commissioner Scrollo?
Okay. So it says that the project itself, one hundred and seventy-six thousand, nine hundred dollars, plus the contingency, which includes that three thousand dollars, correct?
Correct.
On the application certificate for payment, maybe I'm just reading this wrong, why is the original contract sum almost three thousand dollars different?
Oh, that's, so there's two, I wanted you all to see both bids. There's two bids there. There's the one, there's a low bid from, I think it's DK and Sons, DK and Sons Construction Company. That's the one for one seventy-six.
Okay.
With informal bids, all you need is one good bid, responsible bid. I wanted you all to see that there was actually two bids, and there really wasn't that much difference between the two. So that led me to believe that this is what the project actually costs, because you had two contractors that don't know each other, to give me a bid on the project. So we're probably in the ball, the ballpark of what it's going to cost to build a church. That was my reason for putting both bids in there.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. What's the wishes of the board?
I make a motion that we approve a budget amendment number twenty-three in the amount of forty-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. That's correct. That's the ready motion.
And that you authorize the town manager to execute the...
And authorize the town manager to execute, to negotiate and execute the contract related to the bathroom at the Thomas Oakman Campbell Chapel.
Okay. Have a motion to have a second?
A second.
Have a motion and a second? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand? Any opposed?
Thank you.
He didn't raise his hand, though.
I was busy still reading.
All righty. Thank you. Thank you, Lamarko, or Mr. Morrison. All right. Next on our agenda is the request to talk about our, the item is consideration of non-statutory ordinance number NS two thousand and twenty-two dash oh-one, declaring a temporary road closure for the Fourth of July parade. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Morrison again.
Okay. So today was a busy day. Just this morning, we found out that, of course, we found out a week ago that the company that used to do our fireworks, Pyrotechnics, was bought out by a company by the name of, I'm looking for the name now, it's Pyro Site. Megan found out that they may or may not be able to honor the Fourth of July date for the fireworks. And we gave them till Monday to see if they can work out some scheduling things, and it turns out they can't. But the date they gave us that they could make was July the second. So didn't find that out till this morning. And so, Parks and Recreation is recommending that we do the fireworks on that Saturday, which is the only day they can make, which is July the second. But in doing so, move the parade and all the other festivities to the second. And just want to get you all's opinion on that. I realize it's not the Fourth of July, but one other way to look at it is, the Fourth of July, you know, people are going to want to spend time at home with their families, et cetera, and the next day, Tuesday, is a workday. So, either way, we would rather not, you know, divide the festivities and do the fireworks on Saturday, and then do a parade on Monday. I think that might, you know, logistically might be a little costly. And so, we're recommending to move all the festivities to July the second, because of the fact that the new company can't do the fireworks on the Fourth, which is the Monday.
Saturday is the second?
Yes.
Have you looked, Madam Mayor, if I may, have you looked into other companies to...
I told Megan to do that. I said, at least lock the second in, so we don't lose it. But I did ask her, if it's your pleasure to look into other pyro companies, we could definitely do that. So, but I didn't want to lose the second, though, because, you know, I think we'd probably take a lot of heat in not doing fireworks at all. So we at least, we at least, we haven't signed a contract yet, but we at least told them to pencil us in for the second.
Yeah. Because you figure everyone who's not at Fort Bragg, because Fort Bragg will be packed, you want to try, I mean...
So I asked Megan also to find out who Fayetteville uses and who Fort Bragg uses, and see if we might be able to use the same company. So she's already researching other pyro companies, you know.
After I've thought about this, sitting here thinking about it, I'm wondering, since it is on Monday, how many people actually go somewhere for the Fourth of July, because of it being on Monday? So I wasn't in favor of moving it from the Fourth of July, but now the more I think about it, I'm just wondering if the weekend would be better. I don't know. That's just, that's just my thoughts. Because if you think about the, if everybody goes back to work on the fifth, and you've got fireworks that evening at nine thirty, it's going to be...
And we sat and talked about it, you know, it's, people going back to work that Monday, you know. Ain't no, ain't no good way to say it, is it? People are going to be drinking, you know. And so, you know, they got to get right for Tuesday.
Yeah.
So Saturday might work out best. I, you know, I don't know. You know, we went through the pros and cons. So, I mean, and Saturday's might be an extended, you know, holiday, with Monday being, you know, we're going to wind, wind back down this Monday, maybe have a barbecue, and then, because Tuesday, we got to go back to work. So that's what, we kind of threw some things around. But I did ask her to continue to look into other companies, but at least lock that date in if we can't find anybody else, so we don't use the fireworks altogether.
What's the thoughts of the board? I mean, I just threw my idea out there, but does somebody, anybody else have a thought?
Mayor?
Yes, sir?
If we don't have fireworks, we better find a place to hide.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
The date that I looked up for Fayetteville, did I just tell you July first?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That Friday.
That works well, then. I just wanted to make sure we weren't competing with the...
Oh, so they're doing this on Friday?
For what I just Googled.
I think this company may be doing everybody's, and they just, and I mean, they bought Pyrotechnics, apparently, you know, I think they're out of South Carolina, and they do a lot of fireworks in the area. And I think there was a conflict with the new company, and somebody doing somebody else for the Fourth of July. They locked in before they bought this company that we usually go through, so.
Actually, Madam Mayor, doing, if we're going to do everything on the second?
Yes.
And actually, I like that idea. I'm going to be honest with you, because that's Saturday. And actually, it's been a while since we in Hope Mills did something on a Saturday like that anyway. And I, being honest with you, I think that it would establish the celebration and the festivity atmosphere that we've been, we've been clinging for and hoping for a while. And so I'm all in favor of the second myself. I don't know what the rest of the board, how the rest of the board feel, but I think there's an opportunity for us to channel that energy back into the community that we have been longing for.
I think if it's, if it's like the worst-case scenario, if we have to go with the second, because you figure Fort Bragg will get a four-day weekend.
Yes.
And the majority of the soldiers are going to leave town, go to the beach, or what have you. So if it's the worst-case scenario, I would say go for the second. But I'd still like to try to do, because you figure on the Fourth, it's the end of that four days, so they're going to have to come back to town. So that's just my two cents.
Madam Mayor.
Commissioner, Mayor, let Mayor Pro Tem have a choice.
I'm sorry.
Madam Mayor, I'm fine with July. I think this is pretty late in the game. I think it's going to be very difficult to find Friday or Monday at this point. I think Saturday might be our only option, and I'm one of those working people that have to go to bed at work Tuesday, so. I would, I think we would like to have it on Saturday as well.
And then I have a meeting on that Tuesday.
If it's appropriate, I'll make a motion that we go with July second for all of our festivities under the suggestion of Mr. Lamarko and his staff.
Okay. And within that, you want to include the closing of the street, maybe? Can we put all that in one piece?
There's part of it, I think.
And add to that the consideration of the declaring a temporary road closure for the Fourth of July parade?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay.
All right. I will say that.
Okay.
Consideration for temporary road closure for July the second.
Okay. So have a motion to have a second?
I have a second, with one condition.
Okay.
Commissioner Scrollo want to see the truck, the tractor pull.
Oh, gosh. But that was for Old Mill Day.
That's Old Mill Day. So you're the fourth person I've heard.
That's what drove me to Hope Mills.
I couldn't pass it up.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed, July second it is.
All right. Thank you.
And plan a lot of fun stuff.
Give them my phone number if they call.
Yes, please do.
I'm glad. Glad. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I take the pressure off all of them.
Yep. All right.
Sometimes you have to do things that's not popular, but they have to be done in time to meet a schedule. So that's the reason I went that way out.
Yeah. All right. This time, is there any questions in reference to our manager's report? Anything you want to add to our manager's report? Are we good?
Yes, ma'am. You and I have a meeting Thursday with the town board director, Martin Johnson, here in Bushville, Texas. I believe the FAMPO meeting is next week. So we can, I'll migrate them all of our information, so they should have that, but we'll see what they want to do. If they find out, we can have that after the council as soon as we know.
Yeah. And that would be, that would be the additional funding that we need for the railroad?
I just had a question, Madam Mayor. Was there a risk assessment done on this, by any chance? Know what a risk assessment is? Risk assessment, no? Yes? No? 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 Okay.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. No, I'm just, I'm just curious.
Well, you're right.
You know, for any, any kind of, on the military, any kind of action that there would be a cause for injury or something like that, you'd do a risk assessment. And the fact that the sidewalk would be potentially going over train tracks would be a risk. So I was curious if, you know, the insurance companies that were looking into it, or any of that, any risk? No? No?
We have not had it. Usually they leave, they do that for us.
Okay.
Who?
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions about the manager's report?
Just one other question.
Okay.
I know, I notice we're having a Fish Day event coming up. And when is the next time, or when's the last time we actually stalk the lake?
The State Department of Natural Resources actually does that for us, and I would, I'd plan that out.
Okay. All right.
They don't have any plans on stalking it. We did three times since it was impounded.
Mm-hmm. But I know, I, I'll talk to you later about that. I'm good. Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
I did want to update you about the, I had heard this, the booley thing. We had talked in October. Repeatedly, they could not get the boat in if it's blowing in the lake, so they plan to do that, the leave, next week.
All right. Good deal.
It's been kind of lingering. I've been reminded of it. The dive team has to get all their gear. It only have to do at water temperature, but they can't use a rubber boat or something.
Scott, I believe, if my old memory serves me correctly, it's been about two years since we put ten thousand fishlings in the lake, which are the ones that are left, all be pretty good sized now, if they haven't washed over the dam.
I know they're monitoring it, because that was the understanding, that they would, and I think the surprising thing was, the population was, there were more fish there than they realized, because a lot of them stayed in the creek bed. They were, that's why we had such large fish being caught there when we're doing catch and release, was because we actually had fish that didn't go over the dam when it burst. So, yeah. Okay. Anything else for the manager's report? Any other questions? All righty then. Our next item on our agenda is, nope, staff comments. Do you have any staff comments? Okay. Any, anything from anyone else? Any other staff comment?
Anyone back there?
All righty. Then what we'll do is, we have, do we have a motion for a closed session? Hold on, I'm going to get my script.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session pursuant to NCGS one-four-three, three-eighteen-eleven, eight-five, concerning the acquisition of real property, and NCGS one-four-three, three-eighteen-eleven, eight-three, attorney-client privilege, and NCGS one-four-three, three-eighteen-eleven, eight-six, to discuss personnel matters.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. And if you will, just bear with us, we'll be back as soon as this closed session is over, and we're going to report to the front conference room. All right. At this time, I'll call our meeting back to order. Do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to move the minutes of the, moves to seal the minutes of the closed session until such as time of the release of the information will no longer frustrate the purpose of the closed session and further no actions taken.
Okay. We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. And we would like to recognize the fact that Commissioner Marley didn't make it back for the closed session, and we're glad you could be here this evening, and we'll get you up on everything. Is there another motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? We'll see, March the eleventh, eight AM at the Rockfish?
That's Friday. What time?
That's eight AM.
Eight?
Eight-thirty.
Eight-thirty.
Say it.